All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the February 1st School Committee Budget Session 5 to order. Before we start, I have a statement to read. This meeting is being held remotely as an ultimate of public access per so we chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. Temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the County of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting to record it at the back of the law, chapter 38, section 27. But the Chair may inform other participants of said recording. Is anyone here in person recording? We are recording via the Zoom. Is anyone on the Zoom recording other than us? Okay, great. Just like a couple of quick things. Thank you all. Building Principals are here today. We have several people here in person. I just want to make a couple of thank yous. I was away for a couple of days. I'm hoping my dad and I'm gonna thank Nance for leading the last meeting. I'm sorry wasn't here in person. I just wanna give a shout out to Jen and our secretary. We're joking today that we all have to live here in the meeting. Jen has to relive it because she hasn't been in minutes. So we very much appreciate all of the work and to the administration as well for all your work. We actually, some of us attended the board, the select board meeting last night, and there was actually some glimmer of hope. I'm just going to speak a little bit more to it, but the overall town deficit seems to have shrunk from seven and a half million to 6.2 million. That doesn't take into account potential, some benefits that may have to be included in that number, but it's a significant increase to what we were decreased to what we thought was going to be the deficit. So while we are probably not in a position yet to start adding things back into the proverbial shopping cart for the balanced budget, it is positive news. And I'll be honest, I was really buoyed by that news last night. I mean, you know, zero would have been a much better number, but it did make me realize that this is a process and it's so painful. And I feel for every family member, every staff member, the leadership in the buildings, in the administration, students, everyone is really reeling from all this news and these really dire consequences if we don't get this override passed. And I know we're gonna hear tonight from our building principals about just how dire the consequences will be. But then I was thinking today on my way back here, the good news is, doesn't have to be. We have to get this override passed. And I really am optimistic that we can do it. Foster School was approved overwhelmingly at town meeting and also at the ballot. I think everyone in town recognizes how important it is to not only fund our schools, but all of our municipal services. We have been incredibly fortunate to not have had to have an override for 14 years. We've been able to fund through growth and we've been able to fund through one-time use of federal grants and reserve funds. We can't continue to do it. It's just not sustainable. But I really do think that there is a lot of cause for optimism. I think we have to, as I always say, prepare for the worst. And I don't want to say expect the best. We have to work to make the best outcome. We have to work together to make the outcome that we want. A couple of days ago, I started getting some phone calls from people saying, don't cut this, cut that instead. Do this, don't do that. And I'm like, no, that's not the answer. The answer is get the override passed so we can fund our schools. That's what we need to do. So with that. Dr. Adam, oh, actually, I'm shy. We're gonna do a couple of minutes. George, do you need, or Nancy, if you need.
Right now, ASOS is not a forum. Okay, we're good right now.
All right, let me know.
All right.
All right, you know, for change. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. All right, um, 2 is approved in minutes, 2.1 is minutes of the budget session 3 from January 18. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget session number three, held on January 18, 2023. I will second. May discussion. In favor? Those are approved. Budget session held January 26. Are folks ready to approve them here? Okay. So there's a, there's two copies in here. There's a, I personally drew an arrow that I put in there.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, it's a copy. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget session number four, held on January 26, 2023. I will second. And discussion. So on the menu, one that I copied and made, I just something I realized the second I put in the folder. At the very end of the minutes, I just, there was no roll call because it was a roll call vote because Michelle was on Zoom. So I added that. And then also in the very first section, sorry, my wifi is just kicked off, so I can't look at it. It's in the very first section. It said, it changed to student council rap as opposed to school, I school. For those, just the two. Awesome. Thank you.
Can you say student council rap? What was the word at the end of the meeting?
Student. Anybody else have any other? I'll make a motion to amend the school committee minutes of the school committee budget session number four, held on January 26, 2023. I will second. All in favor? Aye, aye. All right, those are approved. Thank you very much. So tonight, we are going to so tonight, we're just gonna do a bit of review. This will be review of the city, but we felt it was important because there are members who may be watching both in the audience here and at home, who may have not heard pieces of this information. So for some of the school committee, for the school committee members, some of it will be review, but we'll promise to go through some of it quickly. And then tonight, we'll hear from school principals on the impact of the reductions we shared last week. More specifically, on the impact for them of the school committee. So we're just gonna review some of the guiding principles that are used for the budget reduction. Provide an update on the level service and reduction budget and update also from information we received from the town. We'll go through the elementary, middle, and high school and provide a summary of the reduced services budget tonight. So when often a question we get, I get often, we've heard often is how did we get here? So a little bit of information will provide some background and some updates from the town government. As the Chair indicated, we learned this week that the town's budget shortfall is approximately 6.2 million dollars, and this is a revision from the 7.5 million. Why the revision the town is getting, and we'll go through some of those numbers, is getting, it's closing out its next quarter and is getting more accurate, accurate revenue information for the fiscal year. So this number is the number today. It might change as we continue to move through the process, the budget process. The portion, school's portion of that budget shortfall is, will continue to be 65%. Right now, it's approximately 4 million, which is a change from the previous 4.8. We however, were reminded, as the Chair indicated, that we do have to account for unemployment costs, which are approximately $26,000 per employee. If you multiply the 60 times 26, it comes out to 1.5 million. So we're sort of, as sort of saying, stay the course of the 4.8 million, not ready to pull back any of the reductions until we get more information from the town about other ways that we might address the unemployment cost. Right now, the information we have is we need to account for that in our operating budget. How did we, the town shortfall, again, from FY22 and FY23. The town used one-time grants, ESSER and ARPA, and the unassigned fund balance to fund increases in the budget in FY22 and 23 for both the school and the municipal side. This is just a snapshot again. A snapshot again of where while you, yes, question. No, I just wanna make a quick comment. There was, just as we noted, that the approximate shortfall right now is 6.2 million, and that number can change. But as was discussed last night at the select board meeting, the expectation is if that number changes, it will change, it will become lower, not go back up. So as more information comes in, so I don't want people to think this is going to be a constant up and down. If it goes, if it goes anywhere, it's expected to go lower, particularly as we wait for state aid information to come in, which hopefully will be higher this year than typical.
Michelle, can I ask a question on that? I'm, I should probably know this, maybe also for the benefit of the public. When do we vote on what we're comfortable with, with the balanced budget?
Yeah.
So one, one is that. And then my second question is, when do we think we'll know if we have to cover potential unemployment? Because if, I mean, obviously, that's
Exactly. So I can say we definitely come up till we know the answer to the better part of the question. When we vote is really up to us. Some years, we have voted for select board and for advisory committee. Sometimes we, some years we've voted after. So it's really up to us when we feel like we're ready to make a recommended budget. Is it usually up to the hearing? And yeah, always up to the hearing, for sure. So no earlier than the public hearing, which is on February 14. Michelle, can I just say something?
Yeah. I don't think I'd be able to be confident about the unemployment number before the vote. Just because, yes, I'm sorry, I don't think the number, but how we're gonna have to pay for it.
Right, exactly. Yes, I guess. I shouldn't say definitively, but I, very hopefully, we will know how we're going to have to put it that. Yeah. Okay. And then last night on the, coming in last night, I think they wouldn't get the other, the next forecast until from the insurance kind of thing as well. And I'm sure it's a reduction in the forecast, but production and expenses in the forecast. So it's like, it is unfortunately, a very long process. And there have been times when we have re-voted the budget number after we've gotten the updated information. So that variable could happen as well. So this is a screenshot of the warrant book from FY22, which indicates the increases in the budget that occurred for both the municipal and the school department. Then there's a screenshot also from the warrant book also indicating that one-time funds we use FY22 for to fund the FY22 budgets, both ESSER, ARPA, and unassigned fund balance at one-time uses of funds. And then FY23, very similarly, the same thing happens. The municipal and school budget, school budget kind of stays, the percentage of change is smaller than the municipal. But again, that increase is being carried forward in a screenshot from the warrant book again, indicating that those one-time funds are used again to sort of balance and address the shortfall in the budget. So some information we received on the forecast from town government. You have, the school committee has these documents in front of them. And I should have gone and walked us through each of those.
So basically, what the forecast is showing is, on the revenue side, we're divided with the revenue from the town, from town government in terms of expected forecasted revenue for financial year 2024, based on Q2 numbers. And as Mark Margaret and Michelle indicated, there may be updates to those numbers based on more accurate numbers that come because it's just a forecast, as we do in the process as well. The uses also provides information in terms of the combined town use of funds in terms of all the budgets compiled together. And we end with the deficit of 6.2 million here in terms of that shortfall or deficit that we're looking at. And of course, as Margaret indicated, we take in 65% of that. The second slide here, which will not be very clear, to people who are with the following, we just kind of, it goes into more detail on the revenue projections, providing, providing detail on it, on the different categories of revenue. Oh, sorry, this is a uses one, I'm sorry. This is the detail of the different budgets, the town and municipal side and the depreciation budget, as well as employee benefits and debt services, because of how, how our tax funds are used and, and the projects that are compiled together to come up with those numbers. And the total you'll see here for 24 is that 144 million for all of town government. And this side here goes into the revenue projections. So just, this is, this information here, just to provide you with the detail behind why are we changing these numbers? It's not something that, you know, we're all thought very thoughtful in terms of the town government and everybody's very thoughtful in terms of how those numbers are arrived at. And these changes are just part of the, the process that we go through before we can finalize the budget. So just to give everybody that sense of comfort that we're not just, we're not, we're not just in the air to try to figure out what's going on. It's the process that we're going through. And even if it's very difficult, that's just the nature of how it will be until we get to the end of the year and we know exactly what revenue is at that point in time. Just kind of, just to think that's good, a 10-year, local, you can see as well, in terms of the revenue that has been collected, the actual that have been collected in the past, and the receipts that are forecasted for 24 and beyond. Okay? So here, in terms of what we're doing here, is that we're taking that 6.2 million that we spoke about at the current shortfall. Our share, the school department's share of that 6, of that 6.3 million is that $4 million number. And what we try to do is try as best as possible to come up with what we think unemployment will be. It's, this one, this one is where it's more of a forecasted number, because we have no real data in terms of how many people, if it is that the override doesn't pass. And we do have those 60 reductions. What this number does is that it assumes that what we did is that we actually went through the process of looking at how much unemployment would be charged to the town based on those number of FTEs. And just one correction in terms of that, that 900, 2,000 says that there's a probability of 70% that that is what will be, those are people who will be charging unemployment, will be collecting unemployment. But we're assuming it's 70%, but there's no definite number in terms of what it will be. If that time was to come, then we would know exactly what that means.
Quick, quick question on that, because obviously, that's another, you know, is there a break-even point, or did you look at if we lower that number of FTEs versus unemployment, is there a point at which that balances out and we could adjust that number? Does it, because it's such a unknown?
A new number, but yeah, let me, it's, it's a, no, 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 right. And I think that's the risk with that. What we have considered is the fact that this economy is not an economy, as Mary would say, a few years ago, when we did have an override, was a much tougher economy where we didn't have as many jobs available, even in terms of teaching jobs, even as available as they are right now. So given that thought process, it is our inherent belief that if that, if this were to happen in terms of the override not being passed by, by me or by me, most everybody would know by then. And right for most of our teachers, between me and June, they would have the opportunity to get jobs because there are jobs out there. Unfortunately, I mean, it's a sad thing to talk about, but that being the case, right? So even if we're seeing a 70% probability of that unemployment, even in terms of, we've considered that to be very conservative because of the job market currently. Okay. You have a consideration on the flip side of unemployment is that we also have benefits that that would be a reduction in cost for us as well. Unfortunately, not many people utilize the town's benefits. So it's not, in the same way that the, it doesn't go in the same direction as unemployment. So it's a low number that we're getting back. Okay. And it brings us back to that 4.2 million. Yeah.
Yeah. Question on the town forecast, education forecast in future years, or we, we, meaning you. Are you supplying that number?
Yeah. So this is, it's, it's an estimate. Initially, it was an estimate of, I think, using a 3.5% growth rate.
Yes. So have we done that ourselves? I guess what I'm, I do think it would be important for us to have a point of view on whatever budget, you know, let's say public services budget, that do we have confidence in that 3.5%?
Right.
Or I know it's based on assumptions.
Yeah.
But, you know, this year, we know the number's higher.
Right.
Would we say we don't think it will be higher? I'm not sure that would change.
Right. I don't think, they got here at a point now where we can, sorry, Carrie.
I just, I think it's gonna depend on negotiations.
Exactly.
Because of, because it's so much of our budget is contracts.
Yeah. And they were talking about it, sorry. They were talking about it last night on the floor, of the town having that conversation. What is the realistic number? I think the town's doing an exercise around using 3.5 and sort of projecting that out. They're not saying it needs to, should be, or is 3.5. It's just an exercise to forecast out what, what the revenue and the expenses would look like, if that was the case. Budgets, like all of our own budgets, personal budgets are influenced by lots of factors, including political, social, economic structures, forces that are all occurring around us. So it's hard to predict.
It is, but the last five years, we've been above 1.5% rate on average. So like, I guess it feels to me like we should feel some level of confidence that we can get that number lower. I'm not, maybe I'm not thinking about it correctly. And maybe this isn't the right time to talk about this.
That is, I mean, it's, I think it's part of our, it'll be part of our broader discussions, but that is, the goal would be, the, the issue has been, we never right-size our budget. We haven't done that in over 14 years. So every year, we've had to add more because we have never been able, we have not gotten to a point that we were at the right size that we are. So the expectation is that if we can get this level services budget that includes all the things we need to fully fund the schools and implement the strategic plan, then we do, we could adhere to a 3.5% increase if we believe so. I will say though, and also last night at the select board meeting, part of the exercise that they're running into as well is when, how many, when will we need to do another override? Like, it is not sustainable for most municipalities. So to be clear, Proposition 2.5 was not meant to say, town revenues can never increase more than 2.5%. Proposition 2.5 was set up to say the townspeople get to decide when they need more than 2.5% tax increase to fund the services that they want. So the town is undergoing that exercise now to determine what's sort of the breakpoint. How many years can we go at this sort of level services before we might need another one? And I think the, the hope and expectation is that maybe that's something that's maybe five years out.
And I, I guess that's a little bit where my question is going, you know, and I know you have been doing a ton of work. So looking ahead and forecasting that out is, and there's a lot of variables, but we know we want a reducible day kindergarten, right? Like, that's another thing we want to take. So I feel like it would be powerful to be able to go and say, we as a board feel confident, more confident than just saying like, well, we don't know.
Yeah.
We hope it's 3.5%, but we can't really talk about, not talk about, but we, we just don't know it's gonna be next year and saying like, actually, we've dug in and
Yeah.
we feel confident that with, with, you know, no ads.
Yeah.
Or maybe some ads. I don't know. I mean, I think people might want more ads too, by the way.
Yeah. I will, will participate in that exercise. Yeah, we'll have to, because part of this potential override is that we will come to a memorandum of understanding with the town about exactly how we are going to hold at a certain expense level each year, which will be an important part of it. So that is definitely a big part of the conversation that we'll be having.
Yeah.
And I think Carrie's points are in Michelle. It's also, is also very important to keep in mind as well.
Yeah.
Because we just don't know. I mean, as is the tip right now, it's hard for me to like forecast out five years, not knowing where the negotiation, negotiation of the plan.
And I think also very hard to project where it's going to be when we don't know where we're going to be on July 1st, right? Let's say. So we certainly need to know what, what are we, what budget are we gonna have on July 1st before we can predict out what we're gonna be next July 1st. So we need to know what the starting number is. So all up to, to your unasked question, but I heard what you were saying, that we, we do have to make some of those decisions, particularly with the MOU before, before town meeting, and really before the warrant gets printed, which is March 2024. 24, yeah, so March 24. Because ideally, a lot of that information would be in the warrant article.
Yeah.
Yeah. So more meetings. Anything of a question? So just a reminder on our guiding principles. We shared last time that this was an extremely challenging task for all the school and district leaders. Every single staff member and resource we identified are valued and important. The staff members are the folks and the individuals who make our schools and in our classrooms, work with students and impact our students and families every day. So it's extremely challenging. And we value and every single employee and staff member that we're talking about tonight. The considerations for reductions included making sure that we meet our contractual obligations, one of them, for example, being able to cover preparation periods for elementary teachers and other personnel contracts, meeting our special education requirements as students with IEPs, ensuring at the middle school and high school that we have, we need to have a place to put every single student for seven periods during the day, for safety and security of our students, ensuring we need class size guidelines at all levels. We also looked, as we discussed last time, to institute some fees to offset some of the, some further personnel reductions. This is just a reminder from last time we shared what the local ser, level service budget would look like. And the balanced budget still includes that, using that 4.8 million number for right now. Now, I'll let the elementary principals talk a bit about, sort of review some of our reductions, the number we have them. We have them level by level. And for this very reason, when the number changes, we would bring back according to each of the levels back into the, the balanced budget, some of those divisions.
So good evening. A week ago or so, I got the pleasure of presenting our school improvement plan. And as I look at this, I know you were presented with this a few weeks ago. I was not present for that meeting, but I do want to just say, you know, in relation to the school improvement plan, that we have all presented, these positions carry weight with some of the things that have been happening and, and the good results that we're starting to see. And I don't want to lose sight of that fact, that in particular around MTSS, in particular around writing, in particular around our kindergarten classrooms, these have a big impact. But I don't want to spend a lot of time because I know we're presenting some new information for the third level of cuts. But you know, even thinking about the K-5 science specialist, I know what the foster building plan includes as far as having that outdoor classroom. Well, that's the field science teacher right there. So all of these positions have a dramatic impact on the work that we're doing. Next slide, please. So as we're looking at So as we're looking at, did we skip one? Thank you. Um, looking at the next round of cuts, we are looking at specialists. Art, music, PE, Spanish, computer, science and library, or six FTEs. We're looking at our literacy specialists down to FTEs. Additionally, some more from our textbook and supplies. We're looking at inter- introducing a fee for strings and orchestra for grade five students. And uh, as opposed to what we have originally hoped to do, which was to reduce. Full day kindergarten, we are actually going to propose to increase the fees. I think, um, if you look at the bottom, there are four hundred twenty-five for fifth graders to participate in strings and orchestra. Which is something I, I have to say as a, I was supposed to be a musician in a former life, so I was supposed to be a music teacher, but here I am. That, that is one of the reasons coming to Hingham was important to me. Um, to be in a place where those things were valued, and I'm not saying they're not valued here, I'm just saying. It's a cost, and we have some families that might not be able to make that cost, and I think that's a future bad. Next slide, please. So altogether, uh, the first and second level reductions came to eight hundred four thousand seven fifty. And our third level reductions came to a little over another nine hundred thousand. Um, from the elementary level, so our grand total would be twenty-six point eight FTEs. And one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred four dollars in cuts from the elementary level.
Um, I just want to confirm that that strings and orchestra refers to both band and orchestra.
Yes, first, but we didn't change that by it is. So yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm not gonna read everything bullet by bullet, I, I think, I, I'm gonna speak a little bit from the heart right now. Having come to Hingham, um, I would say the first thing I learned really quick. Uh, quickly was that our art, music. Computer, library, physical education and Spanish teachers are. Um, I think it would be fair to say partially the heart and soul of our schools. Um, for students like myself, when I was that age, it was my connection to the music teachers that really motivated me to come to school. Um, and I believe we have students who, uh, in each one of these specialist areas would. Say to you that this is impactful to their lives because of the relationships that they develop with people. Who have that specialty area. To continue on, I think, uh, it's important, it's, our librarians are more than just people who allow students to check out books. Um, they do much more than that, right now they collaborate with every grade level. They integrate literature within their block of time that ties into the standards that our teachers are keeping. And this has an impact on that, it reduces the time that our specialists have to collaborate, it reduces the time that they have in the buildings. To prepare, to do the good work that they're doing right now, so I don't want people to have the impression. That a librarian is just somebody who checks in and out a book, um, they are very collaborative in working with our staff. I think of the fact that we have students who on a social emotional level need someone to check in. Students need that adult that they can make that connection with. Our phys ed teacher, our, our computer teacher, our music teacher, they're more than that, they are the people that we look to. To help students come through the door and feel welcome and feel connected. And that goes beyond the simple teaching of the content that they do, and it's not simple in any way, shape or form. They are not just here. To provide a prep period. Their work is much more than that. So when I look at these, these bullets are very powerful bullets. But it's more than just supervising a lunch or supervising a dismissal, and, and I gotta be clear. We have not had a lot of subs coming and they have been integral in each one of our schools, allowing us to keep the ship afloat. Through the pandemic prior to my arrival and through this past fall. So I think it's important to acknowledge all of that. Uh, it does create a schedule that's going to cause people to travel from building to building, which does decrease that connection to the students. I think from, from my perspective, um. They are the people that greet the kids coming off the bus in the morning. So I just don't want it to feel like these are, these are positions that we very easily can say. You know, it's great that we can share, but it's, there's much more going on at each and every one of our schools. Uh, that these positions provide us as a, as a community. I'm gonna pass it over to Mary. Next slide.
Thank you, and um, you know, as Matt stated, we're, we're speaking on behalf of all four of us, we constantly talk. And we did all of this together, and it was definitely with very heavy hearts. And I'm glad you mentioned earlier about how valued everybody is, it's very heartbreaking to think about cutting the position that you know is important. And you know, it, and the people to, you think about that as well, so that was. Uh, it caused a lot of angst for all of us and we are very heartbroken about it. And all staff are definitely valued, as well as the work that has been done since, I believe, two thousand seventeen. On planning for MTSS, also known as HTSS, and um. I personally thought we were there, I thought we had the building built, whatever you want to call it, you know, the roof on top, okay, we're there, we finally have, I've waited forty-four years to see this. You know, exactly what we need in order to um remediate students who need remediation, especially make up for the pandemic. Um, you know, and take all children and take them to their highest potential. Because they all can do it if they get what they need, and I honestly thought we were there. And one of the pieces to that was the literacy specialists, uh, we had, we were fortunate enough to have a K through five reading specialist. Uh, prior to the MTSS work, um, the committee decided that it was important to have two, one that takes care of K through two. Which, as you know, is a lot of work, building blocks to, you know, learning to read, if you will, you know, learning to read and write is really from the time you're born till. Second or third grade, and then reading and writing to learn, which is so important. So to get a specialist, uh, to get specialist, and I know we've talked about the writing specialist previously, to get a writing specialist. Um, to get a literacy specialist, it's going to, you know, um, take over for that. Um, reading and writing to learn, now, can the reading specialists do that for K through two? Of course they can, but now you're talking about one person, in the case of my school, to five hundred and four students. And I know there are hundreds at all of the other schools as well, so the fact that we're gonna reduce to here. Means, uh, obviously a big impact on this reading and writing to learn, so to speak. Uh, because of course you have to put your most stringent efforts in K through two, so everyone can learn to decode. So losing the literacy specialist is losing that comprehension uh piece and that reading and writing to learn. I had a student come in my office this morning, she had written her own book. Um, you know, spurred on by the special ed teacher and the literacy specialist. And um, she had never completely read a large book before in her life, and she was so proud, and she wrote her own book about the book. And I do think a lot of this is because of the efforts of the extra people that we have had. And we are seeing the results of it, and we've been very fortunate, so the reduction would mean less support district wide. For the um, for the whole HTSS, MTSS, this particular reduction. And of course, we're talking about, as I know you know, the K through five reading program. And that we're um adopting this fall, we would also have less, we've put more on the shoulders of the people who are left. And um, there'd be less help with implementing that as well. And I agree with Matt about the music piece, um, having been a very proud fifth grade teacher for nineteen years. Watching that strings concert at holiday time, and that band concert, and then seeing what happened by spring. And um, I am very sad about this fee, I do realize it had to be considered. Because, you know, we don't, we want to make sure that we keep, um, other things, you have to pick, it's like mother has to buy the pair of shoes for. Which child, you know, which child shoes have the, have the most holes in them? And um, the band and strings fee is really heartbreaking, I do think what's gonna happen is more students are gonna take chorus. Don't get me wrong, I love to sing, singing is my thing, but you know, it, it'd be so sad to not have. To not have uh children who learn how to play instruments, and of course feed into the middle school and high school band and strings program as a result. Um, so in general, there would be less exposure to musical instruments, and that's had a time when the state is encouraging us to have more. A couple of years ago, as part of MTSS, we were talking about having third graders and fourth graders having more exposure. And hats off to the music teachers who are trying to put that into their program, but um, it would be a shame to lose the specific. You know, uh, numbers in band and strings. So um, hopefully, we'll be able to hold on to the house. Any questions?
I have a quick question, actually, uh, so, I don't know if this is more your central office or for the, um. Principals, but I went to East School back, right when it was started, when there was a lot of specialists moving between. And I knew a lot of the chartering of moving specialists was like the special junior school would travel to the east. I was curious how you guys would spread out the cuts of the specials. Would it be, how would it be spread out, could we concentrate in one place? That was kind of my question about that.
It's an excellent question, um, and I remember that as well, I was a fifth grade teacher at that time. And I'd go to look for the music teacher, no, he'd be at Foster, I'd go to look for the, you know, the librarian, oh, she'd be someplace else. So um, we, we actually haven't come up with a plan yet. As you can imagine, we've been working on all of these other things, but it would mean that um, there would probably be three full time. I know you're the expert on this.
There'd be three full time in each discipline, and then we would have to look at our schedule, and our schedule then would have to become tighter. To know whether or not are we having our special Sundays, one, three and five, and then they're going off to another school, like. There are many iterations that we can look at, but we haven't been able to get there yet as we're looking at the budget itself.
So we'd be lucky to have three full time people, down from six. So that also affects the whole culture of the school, I think about the other day, and I know you have this as well. We had a buzz assembly and our computer science teacher was involved, our music teacher was involved, our phys ed teacher was involved. Our LMC person was involved, our Spanish teacher was involved, they were all involved, our art teacher was involved, so, you know, that. That's right there, that would be a loss.
All I do that, that I went, when I went to East, um. I think when I was about third or fourth grade, we started getting our own, um, people, and that made a huge change to the culture of the school. We really got a lot more attention from the specialist teachers, it felt really good to have somebody who was just out of school and like. It'd be a shame if we had to lose that, because I remember that making a huge difference when I was back in elementary school.
All right, go, go ahead, go ahead, no, I just see you made point, I was made better than, thank you. Um, and I've been thinking a lot too, but you, you mentioned with the arts, the impact of charging the fees and really even with the specialists not. Be having the home buildings going, it, it, you know, it'll impact the art experiments at elementary school. And also down the road, the middle school band and orchestra program, and then the high school band and orchestra program, I'd say the same with the MTSS. I mean, if kids don't get what they need in the elementary school, they go to the middle school, everywhere at the high school, and it's gonna impact all the way through.
You're absolutely right, yeah, and we should have put that as a bullet as well, it's um, you know, it's the whole reading and writing to learn. Right, um, I think, I think going to be, you know, I, I just observed in the fifth grade classroom where they're finding evidence in text, and it's unbelievable what we can do. Based on even what ninth graders could do back when I came here, so um, you're absolutely right. Them going into the middle school with those skills is just gonna raise them up.
Yeah, I mean, it, literally, I mean, no exaggeration, it sets them up for the entirety of their lives. And take a moment to hear my own story, because both of my um, children were um, arts kids. Um, didn't really know that they tried the whole sports thing, because we were in Hingham, but this is not them, but. They went really hard into the arts and it was in elementary school and my son was in. Um, Dr. Young's chorus class, and he struggled, because he had a very different voice than everybody else, and. He really struggled with it, but Joe nurtured him and got him to audition for this choir called Austin Children's Choir, and. He couldn't believe it when he even got in, because he was so shy, and he was, you know, saying it quietly. And, but he got in, and it literally changed the trajectory of his life, he, I'm just gonna have to. Proud mom, but it's only because it's, I'm saying it for him, I had nothing to do with it, but he got into one of the. Hardest music programs to get into in, like I'm telling you, all because of what happened to him in that music program. At one of their school, when he was in second grade. So.
Just that, um, I think we all saw how hard the arts were hit during COVID. Um, and my kids, two of my kids, um. Uh, music, and they've just did before COVID, and so they would see the concerts, and then I saw the numbers. In a way, um, it was magical to see them performing again right after COVID, but the numbers were smaller. I feel like we're just setting everything back up to, to build that program back up to where it was, and it just would be. Um, as we can see it.
I just got to the finish line.
Yeah, no, and I will say too, just one from a practical standpoint, I really struggle with. Um, a fee for this, because not only is art, art's part of the curriculum, right, they are. Required as part of the curriculum standard for the state, um. But it's also that, these are public schools and the entire community benefits from good public school. Whether you have children in the school now, or you don't have children in the school anymore, or you never used our school, or you're not even thinking that you're ever gonna use our school. But the entire community benefits from that, and to put. And parents will also be paying a property tax increase if the override passes, but to put them on another. Parent tax, somebody used that word before, like another fee that parents have to pay, just is really starting to become untenable for people to. Let them go to school.
Or something that they are doing during the day in school.
During the day, yeah.
I could add one more thing, I'm, I'm thinking back to MTSS and some of our presentations, and. While we tried really hard not to jump out at level one and level two with positions that. Um, may or may not have had a direct impact on kids, and we know some of them do. But I think back to some of the PD we've been able to do within the district on our own. Um, very strong PD around that, so when you're looking at us reducing interventionist, that has an impact on our professional development and staff. When you're talking about a writing coach, um, you know, we just did a wonderful PD within the last two weeks, three weeks. Um, that staff feedback, and I've been able to see some of the work being implemented. Um, and staff feedback about how valuable that training was, those positions do have an impact. On our abilities to provide PD for staff in a meaningful way. Just wanna add that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Good evening, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak to these reductions and the impact that they're going to have. Um, like my colleague, Mr. Shively, I wasn't here for the last time we did this, I was at home. With COVID and given the choice, I would probably be back there rather than doing this again, so. Uh, but I think it's important that you hear from us what this will look like at our schools, if, if these reductions aren't to happen. So, you know, we, um, many of these we've talked about already, the first round, second round of reductions. The uh, elimination of our math tutors, the paraprofessionals, the science teacher reduction, which would eliminate our STEM program. Our art teacher reduction, which would bring us to one full time art teacher, those were all our first and second level reductions that we've heard about before. Um, when we look at going a bit deeper, our third round, we begin with um. A reduction to our inclusion facilitator, that is a special education role that has been in place for several years now. The inclusion facilitator at the secondary level is responsible for a good deal of the academic testing that is on. Connected to the development and um, renewal of students' IEPs, so um, that would be. Work that would fall to others that would um, detract from work that they're already doing or be uh, put upon them. Um, a, a, a great burden that would be picked up by others, in addition to that, our inclusion facilitator. Um, is available to consult with teaching teams about some best practices in the classroom when it comes to co-teaching. Um, and as a, I don't want to use the word consultant, but they, they're an extra set of eyes in a situation where. Um, somebody might be looking for a little feedback, so we would lose that position. We would uh, reduce our, our math interventionist position, that would, that would be uh, removed from the. The tiered system of support at the middle school, in the first round, we took away our math tutors, those two individuals. Uh, supported students in the sixth grade math program, they do, they do pull out support in our math lab. They go into classes to support uh, math instruction for all students. Uh, similarly, our math interventionist does some pullout, teaching math prep classes for grade seven and eight. But also support in mathematics classes on a has-been basis, that support would be taken away. These are our tier two supports that we talked about with our tiered system of support, so we are essentially taking away. Um, all of our tier two math supports. We, uh, in the recent past, were able to. We, uh, in the recent past, were able to, um, round out our, our school counseling department with a fourth counselor. Um, getting closer to the recommended counselor-to-student ratio. Um, this would be a reduction that would impact all students within our school. Our current structure has one counselor assigned per grade level. With our fourth counselor, uh, playing a very important role and they rotate routes. So counselors move year to year with their students. They get to know the students quite well. The families quite well. They're able to, uh, uh, provide incredible support to families in times of need. Uh, just on a, a day-to-day basis because they've built that relationship over three years. Our fourth counselor plays a, a role where they are the first person that works with a family that's new to the middle school. Families that are new to Hingham. As they are enrolling in Hingham Middle School, they connect with this counselor. Who helps them, uh, get to know Hingham Middle School, develop a schedule appropriate to their prior educational experience. And helps them to integrate and then they build that connection with the student and help them become, uh, fully integrated into our middle school. That's just one of many roles that person plays in that fourth position. They also are, um, responsible for the development of five oh four plans and the maintenance of five oh four plans. To make sure that they're reviewed on a regular basis with teachers and parents and that, um. And when a student is, is, um, when the process is initiated, they begin that process and see it through and review that year to year. In addition to that, they are an incredible resource in times of crisis to have a fourth counselor on hand. Um, when we're experiencing a crisis is absolutely essential to making sure that, um, we are able to support. All of our students. So be able to float between grade levels the way that they do. Um, that would be a, a real, um, loss to our school. Uh, and, and one additional role, I wouldn't want to say final because I'm probably leaving out many things that they do. Um, they are, they're instrumental in the implementation of our second step curriculum. So, um, we divided, today we taught, uh, second step lesson to every student in the school, grade six through eight. Every student was able to get the, the lesson on the same day. So it's not staggered, it's not, um, kids getting information at different times. And that's an important social skills curriculum that we've been able to bring back. If we lose that fourth counselor, it's going to change the way that we're able to deliver that programming. Um, so those would be our third level reductions. Um, also, you know, non-personnel textbooks and supplies, we, we could be looking at those at every level. And our fourth level of reductions, um, we would begin with the reduction of after-school, uh, clubs and activities. And I'll talk more about those in, in just a few moments. We would also be looking at, uh, the elimination of our school librarian. And as was said before, a librarian doesn't just check in books, they, uh, bring life to a library. They keep the collection vibrant. They make sure that books are selected based on. Um, the interests of our students and the academic programming of the school. Our librarian also provides instructional, uh, they, they teach our television production class. They teach our media literacy class. So those would be areas that either would not be carried forward without our librarian. Or we would have to change the way that they are delivered. Um, our librarian is an important member of our school in that when teachers and students are engaged in research. She helps to make sure that materials are on hand, um, and walks them through the research process. So it's not, uh, as, as was said before, it's not somebody who's just checking out books and putting them back on the shelves. They make the library a place that is alive for our students and a, an asset to our teachers as well. Um, we would lose our reading tutor. Our reading tutor has been in place for many years. Then they provide. Both, uh, specialized reading services, which are services for students, uh, supported with I E Ps. But also on occasion, uh, they teach general education reading classes such as a reading lab. We would be reducing our world language department by, uh, one teacher. We don't. We don't know exactly what that will look like at this point because that's going to be based on enrollment patterns. Number of students that are looking to take, um, a particular language, whether it be French, Spanish. We would ma- base our decision, um, on that information and we want to meet the needs of the majority of students. The matching number of students who are continuing on in a given language. Um, however, I will say no matter what that decision is, the impact of that reduction will eventually be felt at the high school. Because, um, we will see students who are unable to get into a world language class. Not because we don't have the capacity, the number of seats, but the nature of a secondary schedule. We can only have so many opportunities in a day for a student to participate in classes like a world language. And if it is in conflict with, um, required services or recommended services. They will not be able to get into a world language class. And that's not to say that they won't be involved in world language at the high school. But it will certainly impact how that looks when they arrive there in ninth grade. Uh, the final reduction in this, uh, level would be the reduction of one of our reading teachers. Our reading teachers currently, um, provide two types of services, again specialized reading. But mostly, uh, reading lab, which is a general education support for students who require support in reading. So we would be, I'm sorry, I skipped right over our literacy specialist. So, to jump back up there for just one second. Our literacy specialist, which is another tier-two support that was put in place over the last few years. Um, supports our reading and writing programs across the curriculum. Uh, our literacy specialist goes into classrooms, whether it be science, social studies, E L A, wherever writing's taking place. You'll find our literacy specialist providing much-needed support for students. In addition to that, our literacy specialist, uh, does some direct instruction in English. And also some reading instruction for our reading lab program. Um, bringing me back to the reading teacher reduction, which would mean that our reading lab program for general education. Supports would take a hit. We would have fewer sections available to students, which would mean larger class sizes. Um, and also some students who we, who participate now would not. Fall within the recommended range of needing that support. So students in need of that support would not get it. Alright? So. They were the dollar amounts. I mean, you've seen those before and I don't, I don't want to spend time on those, but if we could just jump ahead to, uh. The impact of these reductions. Obviously, when we take these, uh, supports away, the, the, the most obvious impact is the. Uh, a reduction of support for our students who need it, the students who need it the most. If we reduce our math interventionist, our reading specialist, our literacy specialist, our reading interventionist. Those all impact our tier-two supports that we have in place for, uh, primarily our general education programming. Students who are, are, may not receive support otherwise. So that's, uh, that's a real hit to our M T S S program that's been developed over the last several years. Um, I spoke, uh, earlier to the impact of the reduction in the guidance department, less support for all students. Um, and we have students who are presenting with greater social, emotional needs now, more now than ever before. Um, and we need that, those supports maintained if at all possible. Um, that's, uh, again, tier-two support for all students. It impacts our second step curriculum, our after-school activities. If we lose those, those are, again, one of our greatest. Uh, tier-two supports for students, open to all students. Uh, you know, I've been asked to quantify the number of students who would be impacted by that. It's really difficult to put a number on that. One example would be if we were to eliminate our after-school spring musical, the drama, uh, production that happens every year. Um, this year is, it's probably a smaller number than most. It's about a hundred and fifty students. That's a hundred and fifty kids who are involved in one thing together with adults. They've put together a great show. Our middle school musicals rival most high school productions. They are wonderful opportunities to build community, to tap into, um, a, a, a love that some students already have. Or bring to light something that they become passionate about for the rest of their lives. If that's something that we would lose. Every afternoon, we have our, our fitness center open to students. Who want to stay after with one of our phys ed teachers and learn how to appropriately use that equipment and workout. That's about twenty, twenty-plus kids each afternoon. So, you know, you can take all of those and add them up and you'd come up with a number, but you're never going to be able to quantify. The impact that those activities have on a student's middle school experience. It is what makes middle school special. It sparks joy in them that they will carry forward for the rest of their lives. Um, we, eh, eh, any reduction to the academic programming is something that is of great concern to me. Losing a world language, losing the grade seven and eight STEM programming. Um, it's a, that, that's really a hard hit to take for our students. It's reducing our elective offerings, which will cause a surge in the class sizes in all electives. If we reduce things like STEM or art. Um, but also if we lose something like world languages, I said earlier, that the impact is not just in grade six through eight. It carries on up through the high school. Um, and that pretty much is all of the news I have for you this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions or any comments.
So just a quick question, um, can you tell us how many classes of librarian teachers? You mentioned the digital.
Sure. So your direct instructional responsibilities currently are two sections of intro to television production. So that's two blocks per day and then one block per day of media literacy. So that's three blocks in a school day. But that media literacy class, it's every single sixth grader at some point in the year. All sixth graders cycle through that as part of their exploratory wheel, as we refer to it. Um, so we would, that's an important part of their schedule and we would need to find a way to fill the void that we created there. We would need to see if we had somebody, right now, every teacher we have who is teaching is got a full schedule. So there is, there's. Nobody who can pick that up, given the current schedule that we have. We would make sure that any, uh, all student schedules are complete and without holes. But we would have to change the way that we're doing business right now.
And I, I ask that just to illustrate if we lose the librarian. And there's no one else available to pick that up in the schedule. We're losing world language teacher, art teacher. Um, you know, all the combined aspect of it, there's a lot of electives lost and. And Dr. Adams mentioned upfront, those students need to be in a classroom every period of the day, which goes back to your point about. The class members in each classroom, students not being able to get certain classes in their schedule. Having to have certain blocks where they have required classes, which then when they get to high school, then they might have had an intro to language class or another elective. So it just compounds.
And e- even if another teacher, you can find room scheduled for another teacher to take that over, then those, the things that that other teacher was doing are now lost. And the losses just trickle, they're immeasurable, right?
You know, if we're trying to plug the dam.
And kind of to that point, to the inclusion facilitator, you said they do a lot of testing and, and managing I E Ps. The guidance counselor with five oh fours, those are mandatory, right?
Yes.
So would you say that if that work would fall to others, as you've mentioned, then that reduces their times? Face time of students.
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to point that out. And the other thing too is just, I mean, it's, I start by. First lady would be removing the tier-two math supports. Um, and just the whole domino effect. We're, we're losing the M T S S of the elementary school. And then looking at the high, the, the middle school, you know, what are, what are we doing at, at the high school, you know, because they're, you're going to be making cuts too. And I'm sure they're going to hear about that. So, and similar with, with field science or with science too. You know, losing the K through five science, the field science teacher and then also reducing this STEM elective too. I, I mean, it seems like we're, we're going backwards. This isn't the direction that we should be going in.
No, I, 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 just to speak to that point, Carrie, you know, when, when we think about. The growth that we've seen over the past few years and, and the reductions that we're proposing, we're not reducing what's been put into place over the last few years. I mean, I've been here for almost twenty years now. This is a decade's worth of work going away. You know, our, our classes, when I first arrived, we had one full-time art teacher. And one point two art teacher at the middle school, if my memory serves me correctly, going back just one. We, uh, we are reducing our world language offerings at the middle school. We're back to where before I was here as an assistant principal. These are steps backwards that, um. Don't just reflect the most recent conditions. I think it's important to note that.
Yes. I think too, fair to say on the M T S S, those are in place to. Intervene and help students provide interventions early. Before they arguably need more services if we don't catch them early enough and those services become more costly. So. Save a penny today to potentially spend a million dollars three years from now.
And, and in fact, the high school's getting cut three times because you're.
Right.
We have all the high school cuts, you have the middle school cuts, which will affect all of the kids going to the high school. And you have the elementary cuts, which affect all, you know, it's. Trickle up. These kids are going to grow up with these cuts. These are.
Right, and I would, I would add to the, the allies trying to carry the point with the production of the electives. Those being affected in the, in the STEM are taking that away from the kids. And then. There's no after-school activities for them. It's almost like they're getting hit twice in that, in that area. Um, and then we will see the impact from that in the kids. We don't want all these kids going home to a clock in the afternoon.
Uh, yes, I had a question about the role of the inclusion facilitator. I've heard it run around a lot in these meetings, but I don't know much about it.
Sure. So at the middle school, our inclusion facilitator, as I said before, is somebody who does, um, academic testing. For students who have been recommended for a, a, a I E P or are the, their I E Ps being reviewed and renewed. So they, that's an important, uh, function that they serve, but also, um. Consulting with teachers in classrooms, looking at co-teaching, um, in the whole inclusion model. Um, which has general education students and special education students in one classroom. Um, with two adults typically providing instruction, whether it be a special educator. And a general educator or a, a general educator and a para educator. But that's, that's kind of the idea is that this is somebody who provides a variety of services to support students with, with, uh, special education services. Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, Lindsay?
Yeah, I just have a question about the after-school clubs. I, and remembering back to one of our first meetings, um, and this is in part. I've been part for you. I thought that there was, sort of, this is a B A S program and I thought that there was an enterprise fund. Or a separate account that actually had a surplus in it. So I'm wondering i- if, if, is that, am I misremembering and if I'm not, what's happening to that money? And why can't the paid for, the, her parent fees cover the continuation of those programs? At the middle school. I, I understand we're looking at all possibilities here, but given that reality, it just, it, it, to me, it didn't seem like a cut that actually. Got us anywhere.
Right, so you're right, um, in terms of, um, it being a B A S program. But unfortunately, it's not a B A S program that actually covers itself in entirety. Um, there's a part of it that is, one of the reasons if we go back and see that it's been reduced by about fifty thousand. So, um, so that would be the part that we actually have to pay for as part of operations. So we, yes, we do have support funds in there that we've tried, we're trying to stretch over time. So we always have some kind of contribution to the budget. Year over year, um, but it's not something that covers it.
And was it considered, so right now it's a pretty, you know, considering all of the great things that the middle school offers after school, multiple days a week. It's a relatively modest hundred dollars to, was there any consideration to increasing that fee? To allow, um, kids to continue to participate in those activities.
Right, and in terms of that one, one of the reasons why, um, we, we did consider that. And one of the reasons why we didn't move forward with that recommendation was because we have issues actually collecting those fees from our students. Um, it's not something, uh, again, um, we have several students who pop in and out of activities and. As, as, um, Derek mentioned, we do have kids who, like for example, use a gym occasionally. Maybe once a week or maybe not as frequently. So it's something that we do have a lot of problems because I think that hundred dollars from everybody. Has a reason why, um, it's not as.
I think it's part of that because I think just the age, right? Kids aren't sure what they want to do. So they're like, oh, this, this club sounds great.
Right. Very few after-school activities are, um, you know, you're obligated to go all of the time.
Yeah, right.
So you pop into something once or twice, you try it out. If it's something you like, you continue with it. If you've got something going on a certain afternoon, you don't. Um, but we have collected a very small percentage, from a very small percentage of families, um, the activity fee this year. And part of that is quite honestly an outgrowth of the last few years where, um. We didn't offer as much after-school because of, I hate to always blame everything on the pandemic, but that's the reality. We didn't have the after-school offerings. We didn't feel like it was appropriate to ask people to pay an after-school activity fee. So people got used to. So people got used to not paying it. And we have not collected revenue that would cover the cost of all of the after-school offerings. So that fifty thousand dollars that's in there, it's not even, even if we collected from every family. And, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we would cover the full cost of our after-school activities. It's not a perfect one-to-one correlation. Um, so, you know, for those reasons, that is a proposed reduction, but it's, you know, when you see where it is, that's way down on our list of proposed reductions. It's the, our last level.
Question about, does that include the middle school class? Well, the after-school bus?
Yes.
For, so for kids who have to stand for extra help, they wouldn't be able to.
Yes, that's not reflected in the middle school reductions. I'm sure it's reflected elsewhere, but if a middle school late bus runs would not occur. Um, one thing that was, that's always been an area of confusion is does, do you have to pay that activity fee? Or is it an after-school fee if you want to stay after school for extra help and obvi- that, that, of course not. Extra help is for all students. Um, and we've been fortunate that for many, many years, we've been able to run transportation for students who stay after school. But we will not be able to offer that, uh, going forward with these reductions. So while there will be extra academic help available to any student who wants to stay after, transportation will fall to the families, which will be a burden, I'm sure, to, to many, many people.
And I would just say that's a huge burden, like remembering back to when I teachered in the middle school as a parent who worked outside the home. I mean, thank God for that, because there is no daycare once your kid gets to sixth grade. Not only do they not want it, but that's you're done, there's no option. Your kid is taking the bus home and home at two forty-two. And I'm not home until five thirty, six o'clock, and that's a long time for six, seven, eighth graders to be sitting home with nothing to do but go on the internet and not find anything.
The activity fee is a good example of a hard choice we made because we said, do we, the activity, we eliminate those, or we do we look at another staff member and having enough staff be able to provide um, sustaining security and have a seat for every child seven periods during the day. So it's just one of those choices that wasn't a good choice, uh, it was a choice we made um, in order, um, to be able to still function, um, at the middle school.
I guess on that one though, I do sort of agree that uh, I would support, rather keep them and charge a fee. I know we don't want to give too many parent taxes, but like, if the choice is eliminate versus charge a fee, I would rather charge the fee.
Right, but we're not collecting those.
So let's apply the fee.
Apply, right, I mean, right.
I mean, like, that's, that's, like, we can collect it.
Yeah, but I have the issue.
As a middle school parent, I don't actually know if I paid it. I don't think my kids, I don't even know if my kids participated in after-school.
But that's, that's the issue.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm telling you, we said, we're going to, you know, pay parent, every single parent here and every single parent, a hundred sixty people listening. And, you know, they're gone. We are eliminating this. Everyone's going to say, wait, I, you know, you're eliminating it because.
There's a challenge in that, how much do you need to raise the fee to cover the cost? And as you raise the fee, you have less people participating. And then we still need to be able to put in some money to make sure that we're covering, um, staff time. So there's a challenge, is how high does this fee go? That's dwindling participation, and now you're not covering your costs, and we're then absorbing those costs in.
I understand it's not simple. I guess I'm just saying, what I personally would believe is a better answer is charge the fee.
Listen, you also need a staff to monitor that, to make sure that you are tracking who's not paying and follow up with those people.
Uh, yeah, I'm just saying, if the override doesn't pass, this is a choice, and I would say, I mean, I don't, it's better to have it and try and collect it. And if it's a disaster, then get rid of it the next year. I mean, it's not going to be like we're, we're.
It would then mean that we would have to then eliminate another teacher in the classroom if it is that we don't have the fee covered as well. So let's also be in mind as well in terms of right now.
We wouldn't eliminate a teacher before the year, you, you wouldn't do that. We would not say we're going to go into the year assuming we can't collect the fee, so let's eliminate another teacher. I don't know why we, why would we do that?
We, we, we wouldn't have the funds available to, to balance the budget.
We would know how successful we were.
So we would go ahead and eliminate the teacher.
Yes, there's, there's a point of also leverage when you're able to collect, when you're able, you're best able to collect, um, a fee when you have some leverage. Like, you can't get on the bus unless you pay the fee. Um, so there's, and I think this drop in nature that happened with this developmental age is a consideration.
I would agree that this sort of smacks to me of, and I get what you're saying now, this sort of smacks to me of the, hey, if you can't pay for lunch, you're not getting lunch today. And it's the cheap standard. Right, nobody, nobody wants to do that to families, to kids, like, I'm sorry. Joe Smith Jr., your parenting pay your fees, so you're not able to participate in an ambassador club today. And there's a piece of it, I mean, I get it, and it's certainly a thing we could look at, but I mean, it does.
But right now, we're, we're, some parents are in, in the level services budget, we're, some people are paying, and it sounds like we're not really, we're just kind of like, well, we're just going to have to deal with it, and I mean, that's.
We can do a better job of collecting it, but I'm saying, I mean, we want to be careful about implementing a sort of draconian thing that if you didn't pay, you don't get to participate. That's tough, right? People have different economic circumstances. Some people remember they paid a fee, some people like, oh, I definitely remember paying that fee because that meant something to my family to have to write that check. Nate?
Um, I just want to say on all this after-school stuff, I, I cannot imagine a middle school. I think Alex would agree with me that all of my best middle school memories happen in these after-school programs. I think that you're.
I'm sorry, but guys, we have so many great memories, uh, we're, we're reminiscing, um, because I had a lot of these clubs who have traditional fees on them for trips and stuff, so it's not entirely these fees that are probably in trucks. Um, didn't even realize that the play would get cut, um, with these after-school fees, and that would be extreme hits of school culture and everything. I wasn't even, uh, an actor, and I participated in the play as a clarinet player in the pit band. And so we're students participating in crew, we're students participating in actors. I went to a club where we played, um, we'd city design club, I don't remember what it was called, but we played some city.
Future city?
Um, future cities. I went to future cities every day. I had so many good, great memories, and I played city skyline, it's like I have like fifty hours on it now. I participated in adventure club and ran a ton of great field trips at the school. Me and Alex have just both remem- and that is an additional fee, that costs additional. I want to clarify that we're not paying these field trips out of the ski, but we also were reminiscing, I think Alex agreed with me on how important these are. But we also were reminiscing about the ski club, which again is another additional fee club. But of how amazing all these opportunities we had for after-school clubs really made the middle school experience. And honestly, I think we would not, that cutting these would completely kill so much of the spirit of the school, and that there's any way, if we have to go into cuts to keep these, especially the basic stuff like the musical. It, it would be as such a positive thing for these kids, um, to not have to lose these. I I have so many great memories that I would never have had if these had not existed. I do not know what I would spend a long time after school. Um, I think it would be a real shame, a real shame.
I would absolutely agree.
I can, I can see both sides of it, to it. Um, I will say that as a parent of a middle schooler, I'm going to be making sure tomorrow that I paid my fees. You know, to, to Nathan's point, I was thinking this too about the spring musical, um, um, who, um, middle school was the first time he participated in, um, in a play. Uh, it was the Little Shop of Art. And he is now an actor, um, and he had never acted, well, there was that one that he got pulled off the stage, but other than that, he had not acted before, and that's what gave him the acting bug to, to do that. Um, and I do think that this, that's another great example of how the schools impact the community and how we all benefit from it. Because when you were saying, cut the spring musical, I heard grandparents around the town asking, like, what? I mean, that's, but that's what brings people into the schools, and that's what people, that's what they found the kids, and even like, the community needs as well.
We kind of support, like, imagine, like, things about sports. That's what this is for some people.
Yeah, that too.
Uh, and when, when the, thinking about the others, the cuts that aren't reflected here, one of them was a new fee for every one seventh grader above to take the bus, I think it was a two hundred dollar fee.
Yeah.
For the last week. How would that affect the, the sort of chaos at the beginning and end of the day for the middle school?
Well, it would depend on how many people elected to not take the bus, right? And I can tell you that, um, during the pandemic, when we had reduced transportation, dismissal took considerably longer with half of the students not in the school. So if you consider the fact that we would have uh, close to nine hundred students, if a good portion of those students are getting picked up because if a number, a good number of our students can't walk home, they can't ride their bikes home, they live too far away. So the bus or parent pickup are our options. Right now, I think that the middle school is a well-oiled machine at arrival and dismissal. We get people in and out safely every single day. Um, we have every bus out of the school parking lot by most days two oh nine. Um, it would not be the same, it would certainly slow things down, um, and I can't imagine what our illustrious crossing guard Rosie would do with all of the cars coming and going every afternoon. It might be enough to make her retire, but I'm not sure.
Let's get her on the campaign for that.
I was, yeah, I, the transfer agency is another one that's that one's tricky, because I don't know, I, my fear is that it doesn't generate the income we think it does, because I think people are like, oh, I'm just going to drive, and it's responding, and I'm I sometimes, no, no, you should pay people to drop their kids off, that should be, that should be the fee, right? Right, exactly, I was like, because that was.
To your point about traffic, Nathan, I think the other bigger picture, not to detract from schools, but we're talking about statewide override, and there would be some other reductions to C G officers. And, you know, the crossing guards and other things, so let's add every parent dropping their kid off. And if you've ever tried to get to work in the morning, when it's drop-off time on Main Street, um, you know how pretty it is. So add to that less safety patrols. And, you know, you're going to be adding an hour to commute to John Main Street.
One second, one second.
Oh, I'm just, I'm going to add, I know we saw it during Dr. Vin's presentation, the significance of social emotional hits. Extracurriculars are a tier one social emotional intervention. And particularly for those of you who are parents of adolescents and middle schoolers, you know how important that, um, that engagement is in the sense of belonging. Um, there's really compelling statistics, um, from on the side of the National Center for Educational Services. Um, involvement in one of our extracurriculars is directly correlated to increased attendance, to increase GPA, to increase graduation rates, increase college enrollment, um, so the extracurriculars, whether it's music, art, et cetera, um, impact all of these other factors.
Excellent point, thank you. And I guess kind of both as well, I mean, this is, yeah, on the high school end, we're implementing an activity fee for the high school.
Right.
Whereas we're dropping it on the middle school end. Um, and I think the differential here um, exists because of the, the nature of the high school students, where they actually need those extracurriculars as part of the, the, um, resumes would be for colleges and everything else.
Right.
And for what about, and I'm sure Mrs. Swanson can speak to it next and even better than I can any day, in terms of the importance of that, so I won't even say anymore.
So we don't have a fee today? Oh, we're not, like, so, sorry, I don't want to labor this point, but I guess if we can collect at the high school, I think we should, you know, if it comes, again, I don't I, I want the override, and I don't want the balanced budget, but if we end up with a balanced budget, I think we should have.
Should also remember that this was at level four, which you'll see is also at the bottom, it was one of the hardest. As we didn't want to go even further into educators. So it could potentially, depending on the number, um, be one of the ones that we're able to bring back, so.
Um, trying to go quick about Laura, if you have time, Laura, I have to call the horrible to Glen Road. I can't tell you how happy I am here, all this discussion about the after-school activities. It's the, one of the two reasons why I joined the, um, being a middle school school council, um, so regardless of what happened with the override, regardless of what happens with, um, the four levels, I'm really looking forward to hearing more of what the school committee has to say about how it can be more efficient, retracting participation and collecting rates, all things I think will inform programming, and we can make it even more robust in the future. But the one question I had, um, was about math enrichment. Derek, I, I've asked a lot about math before, but is math enrichment for those sixth graders, is that impacted by any reductions?
It is not, math enrichment is currently, uh, a, a part of one of our math teachers, um, is teaching well with the workload.
Okay, I know that was always sort of in the main year over year, whether or not that happened, so I wasn't sure about.
No, we hadn't considered taking that reduction to the math department, you know, and and I, I hope to be able to continue to say that, um, it is something that we have been fortunate to be able to offer. But it's, it comes down to, you know, the class size of twenty-eight students in a math class or running math enrichment for our sixth graders, you're going to have to make another hard choice, but that's not something Mr. Jewett and I have discussed at this point.
Okay, and then the only other cut to the, um, grade six electives, I think, was reflected on the municipal side, that would be no dare offered in sixth grade.
We're just wondering about that, so that's.
So that's just one more elective, and I think the sixth grader did a great job in sort of showcasing all the different things you can do at the middle school. But that sort of block in their day is breaking. Um, with every conversation I have, whether it's art, whether it's, um, there, whether it's library, everything is just getting smaller and smaller with the career. So, but maybe not mine. And so they have more studies at all their homework, and their study, and they go home and really have nothing. Um, all right, um, if you want to move to, I guess, the last one?
Yeah.
Are, are you sure you can take anymore?
I'm not sure. Cher, show, throw me a cupcake. Just kidding.
I've lost count, but I think we're into the hundreds of reasons why an override is essential for downtown, hang on, but I'm going to add to the list here. Um, the first, uh, couple of cuts you, you've heard about al- already, uh, previous meetings, but I I would only want to reiterate that even, even, even the first level cuts are very undesirable for us, and these are positions that we had lobbied for, literally for years, before finally adding them over the last couple of years. They are providing really important services to our students. And, um, we, we would be very disappointed to, to lose even those first couple of, of positions. And, and also just wanted to remind the committee that the list does not include several very significant cuts that were made proactively last spring. So we, we're looking at, at, at several hundred thousand dollars already that the high school had, had cut uh, after retirements or resignations last year, when we recognize the difficulty that, that we faced in the year ahead and, uh, really wanting to be fiscally responsible to the fullest extent. That, um, even in this list where the, the number gets really big for high school cuts, it does not include several positions already that were not filled coming into this year, and, and talking there about one English position, one reading position, and a part-time, uh, science position as well that we had budgeted for, but did not include in this year's staffing, and we're acknowledging that, that we can go forward without those. So in, in a sense, they could be on that level one and, and level two, uh, already, so. Uh, if we move on to the level three cuts, the first one is very similar to what you just heard Derek talk about with the elimination of the inclusion facilitator position. There's one at the middle school and another, one at the high school. That's a position that was added a couple of years ago and is making important contributions, particularly around um, academic testing. That, that's a large percentage of the time, and, uh, and as you heard last week, and, um, as I think we're all aware, the rising demand for special education services, it's really an unprecedented increase in the demands that are placed upon our special ed administrators. And, and the obligatory testing that's going to happen, we would be hard pressed to fulfill those demands with, without the inclusion facilitator. Uh, the second cut listed here is a counseling position. The department has grown a little bit in recent years. And, uh, entirely appropriate that it has grown in recent years, and, uh, I would argue that there's never been a worse time to make cuts in a school counseling department. Uh, the, the services of our counselors have never been more important. We have approached a right size in our counseling department, and, um, it, it would be a true cost to us to retreat from the right size in our counseling department. If anything, we should be adding more. Uh, it, it would be a major cost to, to be reducing. The third cut here also, uh, every one of these very painful would be the potential loss of two teachers in our world language department. Um, this would, um, this would very likely be a teacher from Spanish and a teacher from French. Um, we're really proud to offer excellent range of choices to students at Hingham High School. You can study Chinese, you can study Latin, you can study Spanish, you can study French. Uh, and you, and you can pursue. Uh, and you, and you can pursue any of those languages to a high level. The school really prides itself on global awareness, we, we list global citizenship as one of our core values. And, uh, i- this would be a retreat, I think, from our commitment to those goals. If we were to have to, to reduce the services and options that we make available to students in those areas. This next list gets even scarier and longer. Uh, the first one is staying in, in world language, this is a full-time support person in our world language lab. Um, I, I heard Mary use the phrase a little while ago about Pennywise and Town Foolish. We get into some of that in this list as well, this, this is a person who provides excellent support at a great value. And, um, this would, in a similar way of losing teaching support. This would be a, a, a real retreat from the quality of service that we can offer in our language lab, it's, it's essential to. To building an excellent program, it's, it's been a pivotal part as well of, um. The really impressive growth we've made and students achieving a seal of literacy. So these are things we can feel really proud of, um, but we may not be able to keep feeling proud of them for much longer if we have to suffer some of these cuts. Um, the next very big number, it, it lacks some specificity, we're looking at four full-time teachers. We feel like it's a little premature to be able to identify which content areas. It could really be in, in any of them, it, it could be from, from any of the core areas, it could be from some of the elective areas as well. We think we need, would need to take a longer and harder look. If, if we got into this terrible position of having to make that choice. And, um, we would need to have a little more information about course selection for next year as well. Um, next is, is the cut of an administrative assistant position. Again, we, we feel like we only recently got to a right size in the high school. And, um, are making ends meet now administratively, but there's, there are so many demands that are placed upon our office staff. Losing a full-time position would really strain our ability to, to do the job, uh, appropriately. Um, the directed study teacher is getting into really the primary tier-two academic support that Hingham High School offers. The loss of that position would, would essentially amount almost to the elimination of tier-two academic support at the high school. It's, it's relatively small numbers of students, but, uh, these are high needs students. And a failure to provide that support would, would really be a failure to meet the, the needs of those students. The elimination of, of a library position. At Hingham High School, uh, our library duties are, are shared by two people who are also teachers. So one of them is, is, um, around a point four teacher and the other is about a point eight teacher. And so they share their responsibilities of managing the library, but also teach. Uh, combination of TV production classes and, uh, have also pioneered our AP research and AP seminar programs. Which have been excellent additions, they're more accessible AP programs, we, we would risk not only. Um, reduction of support for students using the library, but would also risk the potential elimination of some of these classes. If we were to lose one of those positions, again, hugely costly. In music, we, uh, would be targeting here the non-performance classes. These, these are programs that, uh, we, we've added only recently, but. Yeah, take real pride in having added some new on-ramps to the music program for, for people who may not be members of our choral. Or band or orchestra programs, but are interested in, in learning more about music, um, this year, we, we've had really. Uh, exciting growth in, uh, the introduction of piano classes, music appreciation classes. And as well as a continued continuation of our AP music program. And so we would, we would, uh, certainly see cuts into those musical actives. If we had to get into level four, and as we talked about a few minutes ago. The consideration of an activity speed at the high school, which would of course face the same kind of administrative problems that Derek spoke about. At, at the middle school in terms of collecting it, but, uh, also fear that it would be a significant disincentive. For students, uh, and, and as well to advisors. We, we have an incredibly. Broad array of clubs at the high school. Only by half of which actually have a paid advisor. Many of our clubs, especially the ones that have come on in, in the last few years. And, and are drawing lots of interest and activity from students are managed by volunteer advisors. And having asked those advisors to also make sure you're collecting the fee and, and make sure you're, you're documenting whether students have paid up or not. Also something we're really reluctant to, to add or to put on this list, but based, if we were faced with the choice of. Preserving a staff position. Um, then this, this would be something that we, I think we ought to consider, but of course hope we're, we're not put into that position. Um, non-personnel, these don't feel as painful, but would of course have an adverse effect on our ability to. Draw our curriculum and, and continue to meet the, the needs of our students. So those numbers get big, to be looking at a high school that, uh, would try to offer the same services with a million less dollars. Next year is, um, is, it would require a great leap of faith to think that we could do that. Um, the next slide, and, and I think this is my last one, is, is a summary of, of the costs. And, um, I, I think I've sort of addressed all of them a- as I moved through the list of specific positions, but. To summarize, it's, it's less academic programming, uh, both in core areas and, and across the board. And, and elective offerings as well. Class sizes get bigger, some courses don't exist anymore. Our counselors need to try to meet with and get to know more students than they have to now. Uh, and meeting the needs of those students would be, uh, that much more difficult. We, we would lose essentially our, our main tier-two academic support. Uh, we'd have a much harder time meeting the special education testing needs that continue to grow. We, we would likely see decreased involvement in the extracurricular activities that provide so many great opportunities for our students. And, um, we, we could not serve students in the library or the language lab nearly as well. As we do now, we would, we'd have a much harder time meeting the administrative demands of the school and, and so in sum. A school that is significantly less equipped to meet the needs of the students than, than it is today, so. I'll, I'll, I'll bookend the principal's remarks by recalling, I would not say at the very beginning when he was, um. Recalling this presentation of the school improvement plan. Just last week, right, and I'm thinking, I'm trying to think of what's the best antonym for improvement? Because that's what this feels like, this is not a school improvement plan, this is essentially a school worsening plan. This is not the kind of plan that any of us want and, um, let's hope we, we never have to implement it. The very opposite of the school improvement plan.
Can I just ask Rick to, before you finish, um, to talk about the impact from your perspective on the athletics? Um, we heard from Jim, um, last week, um, from your perspective, the impact of. Fees and increased fees and the elimination of subarts and these sports.
Sure, it's, it's really of, of the same, uh. The, the same kind of cost that we were just talking about, uh, clubs and activities at the middle school and at the high school. Uh, and, and to use Katie's expression of essentially it's a tier-one support for people as well. Um, and, uh, you know, at the risk of all overstating the impact of, of athletics. Um, but it certainly, it belongs alongside what we've said about music, the arts and all other clubs and activities. It's, it's a place for students to find a sense of belonging, it's essentially co-curricular, it's a place for students learn. Uh, it's, it's where they develop confidence and strength and learn teamwork and stay fit and stay well, it contributes to mental health. And, um, it occupies an incredible amount of the waking hours of, uh, eighty percent of our students. Our Hingham High School, as I think Jim mentioned last week. Reached, uh, an incredible benchmark last year with eighty percent of our students participating in at least one sport. Many of those students participating in two or three sports. And, uh, it's, it's a really important part of the high school experience for so many people, it's, it's hard to imagine. Uh, I think for many people what their high school experience would be like. Um, if you were to pull away the memories of freshman, um. Baseball or freshman football or sub varsity hockey experience or lacrosse or across the board. Um, the loss of those experiences for students would, uh, would be very costly in, in lots of different ways.
I think, um, I just thought to myself, I'm like, you're, you're so right, because what this really is, I mean, schools are about people. Right, I was thinking, I don't remember how to calculate velocity, but I remember Dr. Pell, who taught me how to calculate velocity, right? I mean, cause that's, that's, we remember the people and experiences and this balanced budget is. Devastating to the people component of our schools. Uh, we also heard last night that the, the town support of the, the crew building. Would also be impacted by municipal cuts as well.
Um, Ellie, um, and, and just thinking about. That every student's gonna be impacted by this, but I'm thinking about the kids entering the high school. The current, eh, current, I think, current tentative, they also miss out on all these activities at middle school. So you're talking about a segment of kids, we're talking about the social emotional wellbeing, supports being taken away. And then we're talking about sports being taken away, activities fees that they may not be able to afford, electives that aren't really available. So I just think, um, specifically for you, we really have to think about as a town. Is this what we wanna do about population of kids who already missed out so much, but.
So, uh, just a question on the athletic project, I, I should. Did, did we could same thing, did we, I know we're already increasing athletic fees in this budget. Did we consider increasing if I an extra hundred dollars to, I don't know if that's exactly right, but if my math was right, that. I think eliminating freshmen in some varsity with a hundred, twelve thousand dollar savings. And if eighty percent of the population is in extra hundred bucks per kid, I'm not saying it's simple for every single family, but. There's, you know, it's a big impact against eighty percent, did we consider that same?
Right, so we, we did, um, and in terms of, and even in terms of the fee collections, um, with. The cuts, we've considered that reduction in the sub varsity population as well. Um, but looking at the, um, athletic budget, there's probably another, like. We collect about three hundred, well, we, that would increase as well as increasing fees. And that we're proposing, because we are proposing an increase in coffee by six hundred dollars. An increase in, um, athletic fees up to five hundred dollars. Um, but it still wouldn't cover the whole, um, athletic. We still have a, a lot of, a lot of the athletic budget that we absorb as part of our operating budget.
There comes a point, we already raised it up to five hundred, so like, how high can we raise it? We look at surrounding towns and, yeah, it just be, just become a really high fee. Just felt that there was, there's a big point, we just couldn't even think about raising it. That high to cover those costs.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and I, I just think, again, most of the kids that are playing are, are. Are paying thousands and thousands, I know not every single kid, but all through each grade. And so you ask a parent to pay, not every parent, I realize that. And I guess I don't know if that, if, I, I assume right now, do we not? There, there are probably certain parents that can't pay the fee today, we figure out how to cover that or families, excuse me. Um, I don't know, I think it's another thing to consider in this, again, not what we want.
Yep.
The balanced budget, but if we, if it ends up being that. I would advocate strongly for higher fees to keep freshman sports in sub varsity.
I would, I would agree with that, and I, I'm, my fear is that we will. I'm afraid that we will lose more enrollment because of that. Not that high school is all about sports, but. Um, it's just a, it's a fear I have.
I just would caution.
And the same with the, same with the arts and all of that.
Yeah, I'm gonna caution that and I don't disagree, I think that that scenario we can explore more and our parents willing for sports to pay more. But once you start adding up for another family, you know, bus fee and activities fee and athletic fee. And if you have more than one student, a different level, then you're talking about four hundred twenty-five dollars for Banded Elementary. You start getting these numbers that are untenable for most families. You know, I have three, three kids in the school, one still in elementary and very quickly, we're talking about twelve, thirteen hundred dollars.
It's a fine, it's a fine line and I should have said it, but I'm saying the same thing, and at some point we are still a public school, right? Like, but, but some of these things are extra, I get that, and I think though, this is sort of my point from earlier that. Schools benefit the whole community and the whole community has to support schools, just like we need support the library and the police department and the fire department. Simply fire and police, not going, we don't ever need to call them, but we still pay them because they're serving the community as a whole. Which I think that's what our schools are doing as well, so, um, right, that's sort of the social, social contract we all enter into when we move into a town. Is that we're gonna care for each other and we're going to pay our taxes to support the services that our fellow townspeople want and need. So.
Obviously, these fees are horrible, should never be put on parents, it's a ridiculous burden put on them. And I would hope that none of these get instituted, but on the sports specific comment, I'd add, um. As a comment about the ability of parents to pay higher fees, both me and, well, me and Alex are, uh. Athletes on the Hingham County, which is a non-school-funded sport. Um, that has incredibly expensive fees of up to a thousand dollars a season, but, and despite those five fees, um. It has the second highest participation in any sport in the human schools, it has almost eight percent of the students at the high school who spend it. So I think that other sports too could maintain the interest at a higher fee rate, not near as high as true, but. At a higher fee rate, and it might be worth it to keep these freshman sports opportunities for people, especially if you can institute a sliding scale based on income. I, my brother's in freshman basketball right now, I, I can't imagine how his freshman year experience would be without something like that. Um, and it's absolute shame we have to institute these fees as a school, but if that means. That experience, I think a huge number of parents would be willing to pay, and I think that that pay will be. Probably enough to give support to the ones who can't pay it, it'd be really sad, but it, I think it's something that's. Who might, might be advantage.
Nathan, what is that fee?
Um, per crew? Up, upwards of a thousand dollars per season, per season. Including the winter trainings now across a thousand dollars, that was a, um. It's an extremely expensive sport, I know the school's considering funding it, uh, that's obviously an outlier because it doesn't receive school funding. Cause of the cost of that sport.
Uh, a, a couple of comments, one, I mean, sort of more gen- thinking more generally about all the schools now, as we're, as we're wrapping things up. I think it's almost unfortunate that we don't get all of these budget nights on one night, because I think we've already seen how like. The transportation cog, you know, reduction affect to all of the schools, especially the middle and high school with the bus, you know, all of the, the. You know, Rick talked about the inclusion specialists really affecting special ed. At the same time that we're losing two special ed directors, uh, that was in Suzanne's presentation a couple of weeks ago, like. These aren't cuts in isolation. And I guess I think my bigger point is I think we're drastically underestimating the intangible effects on students and staff. Uh, I, you know, my, in my other life, I've, I'm a high school teacher, a public high school teacher, I've been at my same position since nineteen ninety-eight. So I've seen my school go through underfunded years and understaffed years and well-staffed years and. The difference between an understaffed school and a staffed school is something you can't measure in terms of test scores, in terms of. You know, what opportunities kids are able to have, it's an entirely different field to the school. It is more stressful for every single staff member, even staff members who are not cut, whose departments are not cut. Uh, you're in a world where, does it take me three minutes to go find that other teacher to. Collaborate with a student or does it take me fifteen? And if it takes me fifteen minutes to find that teacher, what effects does that have on the rest of the school day and what am I not doing during those fifteen minutes? Uh, the, even having this discussion has obviously lowered the morale of. The educators and the idea of going to a more stressful job with more demands. Uh, with lower morale, feeling like you are less effective at your job. Because you do not have the supports to do it well, uh, is devastating for the entire staff. Uh, looking at the students' experience, going into. A school, I mean, you're talking about the chaos at the beginning and end of the school day just from the buses, like that chaos will. Believe through the entire school day, you will have, you know. School will be less staffed, more chaotic, uh, every single student with anxiety will feel that distinction viscerally. Every single student with attention issues will feel that lack of attention viscerally. Uh, every school behavioral issue, every student with behavioral issues. Uh, every school behavioral issue, every student with behavioral issues. And all of the students who sit around all of these students will feel all of this, it changes the tone of the whole school. Um, and so I'm looking at the very specific ways that these cuts will affect everything, and it is so much more than that. It is so much more than anything we've even discussed here, and if anybody is getting any message from this besides, we need this override and this has to happen. Uh, if we're looking at, well, can we, you know, save this by cutting this into this? Those, I know those are all discussions that we need to have, because we need to be prepared in case the override doesn't ha- happen, but if that's where we're really putting our energy, uh, it's too little, too late, like this. I feel like we're driving towards a cliff and it just needs to happen, we cannot.
Especially the middle school, I keep thinking, this reminds me of the COVID years. And can't do that to these kids, we can't turn back and some of those positions, right? It's just, it's and I we are still in the COVID years.
Yes, that is one thing that we keep hearing from people.
This was a recovery, but we are still in recovery. Yeah, this is not, we haven't even, we have just in addition, it's a years-long recovery. And I guess I'm sorry that we didn't acknowledge that out loud when we were going through it, but I don't think any of us knew how long-lasting this was going to be, right? So to say like, oh, you added all these recovery positions, yes, and we still need them because we are still in recovery.
It's gonna take
it's gonna take a very long time, we can't go backwards, I mean, we just can't, we collectively, all of us, everybody in this town, in this room, on this Zoom, have worked way too hard to get to a point where we're like, oh, let's start going backwards where we were ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. I know it's painful for people with tax overrides. But we benefited from not having to pay increased taxes for fourteen years, and we have to just recognize the reality that the services that we want and we expect in this town cost money, and we have to find a way to pay them, and I think that the administration has done a great job in finding efficiencies and things that we can save, so that this level services budget is at a five percent level. Yeah, I mean, it could have been six or seven percent, but I think people really dug deep and really looked at places that we could find efficiencies and move people around to Mr. Swanson's point of the high school. Not replacing some positions or moving people around, and I just think we've done everything that we can, and then as a town we just need to decide what we value and what we're willing to pay for, and for, for our students and for our entire community.
Yeah, having on to what you and Tim said, I thought that the primary uptake from this meeting wasn't exactly like what we should be cutting, it's just how important everything is that we already have, and this will be a uniquely like terrible moment to cut our existing services, my mom volunteered last school year a lot at Foster Elementary School where I went and my brother went a few years back. It was just horrifying for her to see how much learning loss all these students had experienced, like they were struggling to read at just a really scary level. It would really be a terrible moment to cut off that support when they need it most.
Down onto Alice's point today, at the middle school, um, PTO meeting, we had a glass full kind of person opposite of your stage here today, and, and it sparked a conversation around this is an opportunity for us as a community, both as a school and a wider community, to engage in a dialogue as we have today about what's important. What do we value, and an opportunity to showcase and have that community dialogue. It also, as the young people who are here and some who may be at home, it's an opportunity for us to model the democratic process um, for the community and for our young people, um, and to engage in that civic productive engagement that is a back and forth, um, and it's painful and it's slow, but we do know, um, from our history that when communities have come together, um, and engaged in that productive civic engagement, um, and community dialogue, that we've accomplished great things, so that if we move forward, that we engage and look at it as an opportunity to really showcase all that we have to offer our young people and what we value, we value the arts, the social emotional learning of our students, the contributions of our staff members every day, um, and that's the conversation we need to continue to have. None of these are easy decisions, but to understand the perspective of those that are gonna say, why did you do the arts? But also understand the perspective of, of the activities and the importance they play for our students, so I think that's like the half-last, half-full kind of opportunity that we have ahead of us.
And what's, you know, noted as we are having that discussion tonight, and I I can't imagine participating in that discussion and saying, oh yeah, a lot of, they're right, a lot of this stuff looks really unimportant, we could probably cut this and save some money, like, I I can't imagine having that be someone's takeaway from this, so I really I hope I'm making this.
I think it could be, again, I know you're doing a ton of work, but is, you know, you hear all of the, um incredible things that each of these individual people or each of these programs are doing. Um, and I guess what was going through my head is like, wow, what if we, what if we added a guidance counselor to the middle school? Or what if we had two more interventionalists in the, in elementary school, and I know why they're not in this budget. It's because, and I know I've been pushing a little bit on the level services number, I just, I, I thought it's been important for us to have that discussion. But I think, um, you've taken that into account already, that, uh, uh, and I know we have some unmet needs that, that aren't in here, that are important, um, but I think there's also things that weren't on that list that the schools could benefit from, but you have taken, um, care that, uh this isn't gonna be an easy discussion for the overall town, and so there are, there are additional things that could provide for even better experience for our children, and to your point, Tim, for the rest of the staff in school to ease the burden just a little bit more of what is already a hard job, so um, I guess that was one of my main takeaways from tonight.
I would just add one thing on the arts, is that that is a particular area that's gotten cut. I've been participating in programs, and I've been musician, I play clarinet, play piano, I play in a rock band, um, and I play in the school band, and I've participated in it since, um fifth grade, a few comments I'd add just on that experience is, one, the financial burden already exists for these parents who are bringing their kids into music. There's already incredibly high instrumental fees, um, that do the right to own programs, the school just fits in. So already adding on four hundred twenty-five dollars and talk of that, that adds up to incredibly expensive experience for people. That would be un, unachievable for many, um, families, which would be a real shame, um, and would really kill the participation of a program that was already struggling, um, through COVID, the music programs, um, really took a hit. I had talked to someone about this yesterday, I was talking to someone about the override, um and he, he told me, yeah, the music stuff was really bad, and guys had to play in the tent and outside, and I told him that was a good part of it. The tents outside is a part that we look forward to, we spent half our year on Zoom playing in our rooms alone, and many people, um who I know personally dropped out mid-year, couldn't handle the online playing, because there's just none of the joy of music in that. So that really killed the enrollment numbers, and I don't think they ever recover if you were to institute these fees, and I, I, we're just Ms. Melstrom knows, we're just rebuilding this program that has already taken a hit, and I don't think it will ever recover if these fees and these cuts are instituted. Um, and I think it's especially important for kids, who, I know many kids in the music programs, music can be incredibly powerful for kids who are needing special education supports as an outlet, both socially and sensory-wise, um it's been important for me that way, um, I think that I had some sensory struggles as a kid, and the single best thing I did was starting to learn piano. That would be one of the most destructive cuts in our schools, and we would ne, our music program would never get back up to where it is. And that's a program that's already struggled, as it's so I just comment once again how important it is that we pass this override to save that as a program.
And just to echo on that, like, I think that a lot of kid, you were lucky that you sort of had that under your belt before COVID hit. There are a lot of kids who were just starting an instrument, who were just picking up, who never, ever learned the joy of being able to make music with it, you know, my own son dropped his trombone and right into COVID, never actually got good enough to be able to play anything on it, so never never experienced that. And so, yeah.
Carrie, I will unmute you in a second, if you must speak your name and address for the record, thank you. If you, I think you have to unmute too. Carrie, are you able to unmute her? Anyone else in the committee that?
Yes, yeah, um, just looking at the numbers, when when we were talking about athletics, um, we know that we've got an eighty percent participation rate, and just doing the quick numbers, it would be a fee that's over a thousand dollars. And then that would reduce the participation, so we'd be charged, just trying to catch up to what that right number is, and you're, you're getting to fee that is, is, is too astronomical for the number of programs that we currently, um, offer, so I think it is, um I, I, all of this is really important, I think all of this is detrimental to the school and the kids from a social emotional perspective and the education, and we are recovering from COVID. And it's significant, um, you know, we shared stories last week that it, the kids are struggling and it's going to be for years to come. Um, but I like to think of things as the last half-full, I am optimistic that we will get this done. I think it is important to have these community conversations, um, to get different ideas out there. At the end of the day, if the override doesn't pass, we can make different decisions on fees. Um, we can come back to the table and have these discussions, but I think we need to educate people on what is going to happen, um, if, if it doesn't pass, and just be optimistic, we, we have to do this as a community, it's not just the schools, it's every single department, it will have cuts, and it will be detrimental to our town. And I've spent the week talking about how this has happened, because there was the chat last week, and, and people were asking, how did we get here, how do we not know about this? And, um, I keep telling people, we did know about this, people who have been going to town meeting for the past two years, and even before that, they knew, we knew that Kingham has a revenue issue, AdCom has been saying this for years, our expenses are outpacing our revenue, it's a simple math problem. We were able to fund the critical positions that we had two years ago with one-time money. That was agreed and approved at town meeting, so everybody who showed up to town meeting had a say in that. So we collectively knew as a town. We collectively knew as a town again last year when we said, you know what, we need to do an override. We need to put this forward to the voters, but we need one more year, so we collectively said when we voted at town meeting last year that we were going to use a fun balance, so we need to collectively come together as a town to educate people as to how we got here. We have known that there's a revenue issue for years, the town put together the Sustainable Budget Task Force to, to look at our revenues, our expenses, what other opportunities we have, we delivered the report on this day last year. We have a revenue problem, and it is because we had growing budgets, but we were able to rely on new growth in years past, that new growth has dried up. Therefore, we need to balance it with something else, other towns have done overrides. We have not done an override, other than, um, for East Opening. We opened East, we needed two million dollars, we got a million dollars. We have been having shared resources ever since, and the schools have had to recover ever since. So when we look at the budgets, the school budgets have gone up four percent, five percent, that's because numbers of positions that we didn't get from the East Opening needed to be replenished, and we're finally there. We finally have these positions, we're finally at a point where I can say, you know what, we're almost right then. I think for the strategic plan, I think about the other financial aspects of that, I think there's two big things that still need to happen from the strategic plan, the technology needs to move out of capital so that we can fund our capitals properly, so that we're not putting Band-Aids on things to the point where it becomes so expensive down the road that we end up paying more than we would have if we had just funded it properly the first time. And we need to fund, um, full day kindergarten, those are the two big other things that need to happen, I think we're almost there. But I, I don't feel comfortable saying that we can stick to a three and a half percent growth rate until we're right-sized, and I made that very clear when I was on the strategically Sustainable Budget Task Force last year, we can't stick to the three and a half percent because we're gonna constantly be playing catch-up again. Unless we write that, and I think, I think we are there, I think we have had a lean district for a very long time. Including central office, and so certain decisions that may not have been efficient in the past, they, with the team that they currently have, because we have a right-sized central office, they can finally make decisions about making things more efficient, which is what Dr. Adams and Ayesha have done. They found efficiencies, I think they will continue to do that, because they have the time and the ability to do that. We have not had that, and that was something that was cleared during the Sustainable Budget Task Force last year too. Central office was extremely lean compared to our benchmark towns. So if we're looking at benchmark towns, I always look, look at per pupil spend, I know that's a, a hotspot with some people, I'll look at that, and then I'll also look at the student-to-teacher ratio, before the pandemic hit, we were the lowest of our benchmark towns. Below us, we, we had a higher teacher-to-student ratio, higher than state average. And we're only just recovering because we've lost four hundred students. If this happens, we will lose more students, and those numbers only get better because we're losing students to public education. And everybody in this room is a proponent of public education, we should be supporting this, so we need to make the case to town. In addition to all of the other things that everybody else in town wants. You want a fire department where they don't have to work two forty-eight hour shifts? Yeah, I want that, I want them to be able to, to be able to go home and not, you know, um, be in trouble if they don't, if they, if they do go home. I want the police to have the adequate number of police, I want the library to be open on Sunday, I want the transfer station to be open. And if the swap closes, my kids are gonna go nuts. So all of the things, we have to talk as a community, we have to talk about what this means as a community. And it's really important, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, because we've needed to have it for many, many years.
I have one little task, our homework for everybody, everyone that's listening online, all the parents in the room, go home over the week when you're at your arts programs with your kids, and you're on the sports field with your kids. Tell people, talk to your, um, your friends, tell five people what's going on, everything you've heard tonight. We need to spread the word, what's going on.
I agree.
With a positive? Yes, and I would agree, and there's a lot of information on the town website about the override, about sustainability task force recommendations, about all of the cuts, not only on the pool side, but also municipal side, and also if, if you're new to town or you haven't participated in town meeting, it is something that is open to every registered voter in the town. Some people don't know that, they think people are elected to be on it, every voter can show up, so if you need information about how town meeting process works, you can look online, the information is out there, we do need every eligible person who can come to town meeting, come and voice their, um their thoughts on what we want to do and what we want to, but how we want to support our municipality and our schools, it's incredibly important. Um, we do have a couple of other things on the agenda, just to get to, um review of facilities and yes, there are fees, okay, to go over, alright, so, um, let's we'll wrap up at the end, but about renewal of the facilities and transfer fees and foods that are being proposed. Um, in terms of those, um, the transport fee that, for the, for the, for the facilities fees. When we took the, one of the, the facilities fees and rentals for our buildings, um that's this document that I thought, yes, Mark, and one um, we reviewed those, I mean, evaluated um, what we thought would be appropriate in terms of those fees based on the users of the facilities. This, this, this part here assumes that in a lot of cases, if we have the, the fields and any, um property managed right now by the rent department, we may have the associated with those, um, areas. But it's, in all cases, it's either not protected by us or it's a, at that moment, um, we, we want to be effective, that'll be
Right away, but in terms of the rec fees. Um but we, we who let the, those speed and cave, just as a portion in terms of not knowing whether the override. Will be passed or not. Um is it the override is not fast, but we know it's in any way. But um that comes back to us as well. So we wanted to just kind of preview what the restructuring would be. In both scenarios. Asia, I'm sorry, did you? Is this? The fees for the rectifier or not? Right now. So the part, so the, those, those, some of those here, a lot of the rectifier fees, they are out, these that we are proposing. And they do cover some of the areas that are managed by the rectifier. Because I know the we. We met with a rectifier a couple of years ago and we went to do their. They have their own um permit that they submit and it reflects. The common, any conversations between us and them. This, this won't impact that at all, correct? Exactly, because in terms of that, um this assumes that for those areas, it would assume that. Because as far as the reductions on the town side, that program is also part of their reductions too.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Um and in terms of our reductions, our contributions to them are also part of the reductions. So if that would happen. All of these will come back to us. The best outcome, how did you do? Override this fast, then these will not be part of the schedule anymore and that will be updated.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you. Um just really quickly, I just, I just want to. Make a note because I. People in the room left and then I noticed that the Zoom participation is dropping precipitously as we move on through the agenda. So I just want to make two plugs. Um February seventh, we have a school committee budget meeting with advisory committee um. That is a posted public meeting, so that is an important meeting for folks to um participate in and attend. And then February thirteenth at six PM, um the school committee will have a public budget hearing. And that is an opportunity to hear from the public on the uh budget proposals. So just wanted to put those in there. Sorry.
Remind us, to Asia, when was the last time you berated?
I think it's always in twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen. So this schedule also got a couple of thing categorizes groups based on their relation to us, relationship to us. The first category um assumes that there are, um looks at. School-related organizations, PTOs and boosters. And what we're proposing in most cases for those um groups, they only pay a custodial fee. Um we're just including like utility, wear and wear and tear fee as well. Um but I think. We have been on the fee scheduling, but paid a lot of pieces before. But this will be so important for us to ensure that we're including those fees as well, right? The other thing that we're doing as well is that we're making sure that we reflect. Custodial fees based on contracts that we currently have. Just to make sure that we're at least covering our costs in, in those agreements here. Then we have a community-based organization, so it should probably be a lot of our sports teams and groups that use our facilities. And lastly, there are private organizations and groups that are um in these facilities as well. So the restructure increases based on. Those groups. Um because our boosters and our PTOs directly benefited our students. Then in the workplace is, they're just providing them the cost, they're just keeping the cost of. Moves um of using the facilities, whereas the other groups, um it's a, we, we um. Lean on them in terms of more, in terms of warranty and um. And being able to also replace all of those facilities as well and take care of our facilities as well. So we're hoping that this will go into effect for July one for the facilities for transportation. We're asking for immediate. Um so this is a review of the fees, but once you review them, we hope that we can have them approved. For transportation as soon as possible. Well, our hope is that we can get this approved sometime um before spring so that we can then share them with all of the organizations to use the space. Um and begin to say that on July first, we will have new rates and will be collected. Um as Aisha said, we're in some cases not covering our costs. Um and for contractual arenas that we have with so with staff. As well as not collecting um base um fees that allows to. Address wear and tear of the building through the use of those um groups using the um the space, so. So do these. Increases. Now make this an enterprise fund versus. Generating revenue because right, it sounded right now, we're not covered, the, the current fees are not covering the cost. Is this going to make this work even or will this generate some level of revenue? So in terms of where we, we get to the um the category three, yeah, it would generate some, I mean. And in terms of um. The lower categories one and two. Um I think two is more, it is covering our costs. And of course, the more in terms of our warranty and where our facilities have been, it over time.
Yeah.
And we haven't had any allowances for. Um collecting all these. Okay, no, that's fair. I just, and I appreciate that because I do feel particularly based on my comments earlier about. You know, sporting community spaces, I don't want to be making money off of, but we do need to be, they do need to be covering the cost. So. Good with the category one, two, um businesses and individuals, companies. So it's on the agenda, wrote on tonight, but um we'll put it on for our page at Thursday. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of information here. So I got a lot of questions from. Coming in terms of that. So just give you some time to ponder it and then we can um. Approve it maybe at the next couple of meetings.
I think that my website, I can look at it. I know you said you're gonna reserve a PTO.
Yeah. I think the transportation fee is the one that we would like to um. Start to implement before July first so that, again, we're covering our costs. Um in case, some cases, we're not covering um our costs. Again, we'll put it on a, a future meeting um for a vote, but it's one that we'd like to do before July first.
Exactly, yeah.
And then in terms of, and, and, and we've had a couple of requests from the transportation perspective. From um non-school-related organizations. As we wanted to have a fee schedule in mind that had been voted in. So if we have um these types of requests. We would, and we have um available buses and, and staff, we could um provide some resources as well. It's just for your review of this then.
Alright, great. Thank you very much.
Alright, any other? Alright, um any other items not written down, forty dollars? No, alright. Um we'll just quickly before we adjourn for the few people left to end, a few people on Zoom again. February seventh, seven o'clock, school committee budget meeting with advisory committee, February thirteenth. Six o'clock, school committee public budget, public budget gearing and then we'll have our regularly scheduled.
Can I have one more plug?
Yes.
Monday, our esteemed uh Chair of School Committee and our Chair of the Finance Subcommittee are. Doing office hours at the, so I know a lot of people in the community have a lot of questions and. Want to get sort of more granular with things or how, you know, that. One more involvement that they can have in a school committee meeting, please come to next Monday to uh room one oh three at the high school. Uh from seven thirty until nine o'clock and Ness and Michelle will be there with bells on.
Yes, it is definitely, yeah, definitely. It is a great opportunity to come and ask any question, notes to the questions, no question, you know, sometimes people are not. Don't want to come online or. State their name and their address and this is just Ness and I and whoever comes and you can drop in and out. You don't have to stay for the whole. Time, they'll stay as long as people want to, want us to stay to answer questions. Um but yeah, I would love to have some more engagement from folks. Um particularly if you have ideas on how you can help us try to push that, push this all forward. Um and then I would just say just to recap um from earlier, thank you everyone for being here. Um Nate and Alex, thank you very much. Your perspectives are very, very important and very impactful. Um thank all of you. Right, Moon, I know we've had some very difficult conversations with folks and I know how incredibly hard that is to deliver um. And also for those folks to hear it. Um. I do want to say as we started the meeting that I do think there's a lot of cause for optimism here. I think you can hear it from the committee and all the people here. We are passionate about these schools. We are passionate in getting this override done. Um this is. A simple math problem as Ness pointed out and the only answer is the override. So we need to do everything we can collectively. Um working together to get it done for our students, for our faculty and for the greater community as well. So. Thank you everyone for your time tonight and every day. Um. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Return. Thank you very much.